Can you hear me on this? Here we go. Okay, I do not have a gavel here, so I'm just gonna call the meeting to order. I'm not gonna bang on the desk. So, thank you all for coming tonight. It's always a pleasure to come down to Berthoud. Wendy, if you would call a roll, please.
Paul Banks.
Here.
Pam Howard.
Here.
Lori Visder-Ward.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Dave Levy.
Here.
Mark Sutter.
Here.
Jeff Swanty.
Here.
All right, thank you. Pam, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, there's a flag in the back corner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and the mission statement, please, if you would read that, Pam.
The Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers, challenges, and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel. Thank you. First item on the agenda is item 2.1, Adoption of the Agenda as Printed, and I will entertain a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second? Great. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. Are there any changes or discussion? Okay, Wendy, if you would call a roll, please.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swanty.
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda is adopted as presented. Next up is item 3.1, Approval of the Minutes from the Regular Meeting on March 21st, 2018, as presented in Board Docs, and I will entertain a motion to approve those as well. And a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Are there any corrections, additions, changes? No? Wendy, call the roll, please.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Yes.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swanty.
Aye.
Thank you. Those are approved as well. Public participation, are there?
Yep, we have three.
Okay, so Pam, if you, so the next item up then is public participation, and we have a couple of folks signed up, so if Pam, if you would read the policy statement, please.
Because the board wants to hear the viewpoint of the public and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner, we have scheduled time during the regular board meetings for comments from the public. The board has set aside an unlimited time for public participation prior to the business portion of each meeting on the first and third Wednesday of the month. The time for each speaker is limited to three minutes, and each individual will only be recognized once. The board will not respond to comments or questions.
All right, thanks. And you have a watch or a clock or something over there? Okay.
Yep, so I have Rob up first and Maia on deck.
Hi, I'm Rob Everly, and I'm representing the Thompson Education Association Executive Board, and I'm at 3439 Metallark in Fort Collins. And on behalf of the Thompson Education Association Executive Board, we wish you well in your deliberations on the appointment of the next superintendent for the Thompson School District. We appreciate your hard work and diligence in this very difficult task. As an association, we value the positive and collaborative relationship with our administration and the effort all parties put into creating this relationship. We believe our students are best served when the administration and the teaching staff are on the same page, focused on the same issues. We sent you a letter detailing our findings on one of our finalists that we found troubling. We are giving you a copy of this letter now, in case you haven't seen it. Good luck in your decision making, and we look forward to working collaboratively with our next superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got Maia and we got Laura on deck.
Good evening, Board. Maia Matisse Lorenson, 5325, Gary Drive, Berthoud. I'd like to yield my time to Laura Hoimi at this time.
My name is Laura Hoimi, and I reside at 2033 Cuda Court in Berthoud. Good evening, and thank you to the board and staff and parents and all of you for the time that you put into supporting our schools. My name is Laura, like I said. I'm a parent, I'm a PTA member, and I'm a SAC member at Berthoud L. I'm here along with several parents and several teachers from Berthoud L. As you may know, Berthoud L currently has 470 students. The capacity that the district has established is 480. These numbers do not include the early childhood program at Berthoud L. Berthoud L is getting quite crowded, and from the information available to us, it appears that Berthoud L has one of the lowest square footage per student ratios in the district. The growth in student numbers has caused crowding in classrooms, as well as impacts across the school community. The 470 students have to get through the cafeteria during a district-specific time block. This means that students are only getting between three to 10 minutes to eat their lunch, and the school has worked diligently with district staff to alleviate this issue. However, students are not getting enough time to eat their lunches. Berthoud L does not have trough sinks near the cafeteria to handle the magnitude of students coming through the cafeteria, and that means that they need to use hand sanitizer to wash their, to clean their hands, which means that Berthoud L has been in violation of health code. On the playground, the increased number of students has led to an increase in discipline issues due to just the number of staff supervising the number of students. Most importantly, school staff have worked to clean out every storage space in that building, which has been there since 1962, to use every space possible for student support. The SAC committee and district staff have walked through the building in exhausted ways to use the existing space. However, multiple staff members are sharing small spaces. So the school counselor, psychologist, speech, occupational therapist, English language development teacher, gifted and talented teacher, these are all staff members that work directly with students, and they need to work with them in a confidential manner. But multiple staff members are sharing spaces that are smaller than a typical classroom size. These areas were originally designed for storage and create safety concerns and code violations. There is no space for volunteers to meet with students, so they have to sit in the hallways. In addition to space issues, there are staffing issues. Having been a school psychologist for over 10 years, it is clear to me that providing a halftime counselor for 470 students is inadequate. Clearly, this is not a situation to be taken lightly, given that Berthoud is a town that has struggled with several student losses and mental health impacts in recent years. These are just a few of the issues we already have with the current overcrowding at Berthoud L. But the inevitable rapid growth of Berthoud will only make the overcrowding worse. According to the town of Berthoud, the approved developments currently under construction within Berthoud L's attendance area alone include over 1,500 residential units, which will bring in hundreds of additional elementary students to Berthoud Elementary. This is consistent with the study provided to the district by the Delinka Group in June 2016, where they projected that Berthoud L would reach 720 students by 2025. Developments currently under construction within Berthoud L's attendance area include Vantage at 603 residential units, Heron Lake at 543 residential units, Hammond at 267 residential units, and Gateway, Berthoud Lake Enclave, and Longspit Farm add up to an additional 100-plus residential units. So members of Berthoud L's SAC team have attended school board meetings, master plan committee meetings, and stakeholder meetings, and so to the Board of Education we ask, what is the plan to support students and staff at Berthoud Elementary? Have you been made aware of the issues presented tonight? Is there anything that can be done to resolve the issues presented? When you meet with the master plan committee this month, please ask, what is the plan to support students and staff at Berthoud Elementary? Can an audit be performed to validate the capacity number of 480 students? Because for a school that's considered to be 10 students under capacity, what would be the reason they would have to use spaces intended for storage for student support? When you meet to review the budget this month, please ask, what is the plan to support students and staff at Berthoud Elementary? District staff members have made it abundantly clear that there is no money to support a building expansion without a bond. But are there any funds to support a modular, or are there options for the community to step in and facilitate additional space? Multiple modulators have been in place at Berthoud L in the past, so this would lead us to believe that there's infrastructure already in place to quickly and economically support the installation of a modular. A modular building is by no means a long-term solution, but we need to address overcrowding now. So again, we ask, what is the plan? Without a plan, the reputation and desirability of Thompson School District will sharply decline. From our discussion with district staff, it seems that they are only able to focus on the minimum standard of finding a seat for each student, regardless of quality of education and safety of our children. So don't be afraid to request assistance from the Berthoud community, as we are willing to do what is necessary to support district and school staff with what's needed for our children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the public participation portion of the meeting. Next up is discussion items. So item 5.1 is the Head Start Self-Assessment, Lam Caro, and I believe we have a copy, a printed copy of that here. Looks like this.
Yep. Madam President, Dr. Shear, members of the Board, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to share the results of our self-assessment that we conduct every year on our program. So in this, in the memo that I sent you, I summarized the strengths of our program, the outcomes from last year, and our recommendations for the 2018-19 school year. So in the memo is a summation of what's in that report that you have in front of you. I just wanted to share a little about the self-assessment process. It included parents, staff, and members from the community that participated in it. It ran from November till February, and the results were shared with our Family Pie, Families Partnering in Education, and now I'm sharing the results with you from that, from our work. So it is a very comprehensive look at our program. It covers everything from nutritional services to transportation, to educational outcomes, and so forth. So if you had a chance to look through there, I'd be willing to answer any questions that you have.
Lam, if you wouldn't mind, would you, I'm looking under the areas, maybe?
Uh huh.
The separate areas, health and safety, there's maybe a couple. Could you maybe just, on each one of those areas, really quickly touch on a highlight?
Sure.
Tonight?
Yeah, so in health and safety, one of the things that we talked about was implementing a new, ensuring that drills were covered in the AM and the PM for our programs. So a highlight was that we ensure that we have compliance in both, and it involved working with principals to make sure that they didn't always schedule them on Fridays, so we could make sure that the students in both sessions could participate in those drills. URC is a very long acronym. It's Eligibility, Recruitment, Selection, Enrollment, and Attendance. And that's really taking a look at our eligibility outcomes for the program. And so for this particular of the year, we looked at the full day sites that we implemented at Monroe, Edmondson, and Sarah Milner. For the education piece, since the Head Start audit was this year, we focused on the classroom interactions with teachers and students, and so that's class. And that's, it's kind of funny that it says class, because it's actually the classroom assessment of teachers. So it measures the quality of not what the students are doing, but it measures what the interactions of the teacher are with students. PFCE stands for the Parent-Family-Community Engagement, and this is one thing that we are very excited about this year. Whenever we go and visit a home, we set goals with those families. And last year, we weren't happy with the amount of goals that were set and that were completed. So this year, that goal went up from 65% last year to 79%, so that's a pretty good increase in terms of families following through and completing their goal for the year. Transportation, we realized that we need to replace restraints in our buses for our early childhood students, so we replaced those this year, and then we've created a cycle to make sure that we have a replacement recycle for those restraints during the school year, every year. And then our school readiness schools, I provide it in the back. And the one piece that's missing is we haven't done our final benchmarking yet for our students, and that will be on May 11th. So the school readiness schools are part, it's part of this, but it's also a part of a section of the Head Start grant that we have to address.
Okay, any questions? We're not, you don't need us to adopt this, correct?
No, this is the discussion, so I need it at the next one, so.
Okay. Oh, so it will be adopted the next time?
Yeah.
Okay. So at this point, this is just the discussion item, presentate, the initial presentation, time to ask questions, and then we will be expected to adopt it next meeting, Board. Any questions before I let Lam go? All right?
I appreciate how thorough it is. I appreciate how thorough you are in the report.
Oh, thank you.
Specifics, that was good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item 5.2, the Implementation Task Force, and that update, and that is reference to the school start time change that will, that will take place next, next school year. And is that, who's presenting on that? Dr. Sebers?
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Shear, Bill Sebers, Chief Human Resources Officer of this amazing district. At this time, this is basically an update of where we're at with the Implementation Task Force that we had put together. So I won't go over the details around that, but we have individuals here that were representatives of each of the committees, so we split up. I had mentioned that we split up the concerns and things that need to be addressed, and we had different people that were in those committees compared to the overall committee. So people with different lenses were invited to go to those. Also, we had parent representation on each one of the committees. So first, I just want to introduce, Margaret Crespo was one of the ones that were in charge of it, and Anne Marie Sanchez, the elementary director, is there to present tonight. Tom Tisher, our HR Director, facilitated one of the groups. And also, someone that was a big part of it was Myron Wilson, who is our transportation director, and he'd like to stand up and wave to you in the back. And then Dorothy Barnhart also facilitated. Unfortunately, she's not able to make it tonight, so Dr. Margaret Crespo will represent the conversation that took place in that group. So the presentation will basically be about what the discussions were about, things that they're moving forward, answer any questions from there. So I will start with group number one, which is the Activities, Athletics Concern, and Questions that Were Brought Forward.
Thank you, Dr. Sebers. Margaret Crespo, Chief Academic Officer, and part of the, facilitated this portion of the implementation meeting. The highlights really were around activities and athletic opportunities for our students, making sure that those still were available and viable, and then some conversations around usage, and we had a number of multiple members of the community, as well as internal staff there. Had some great discussions. Feel like we have a plan moving forward. Thank you again to Myron. He was able to come to one of our meetings specifically around those transportation questions, and we are certainly ready to roll as things emerge.
So before we go on to the next group, what are the next steps for your group?
For our group?
For that, that?
For our implementation, right now, we're working with our facility partners to find locations for those, for those teams that will need practice areas and things like that. We think that we can manage that within what we have in our relationships. So just planning that, scheduling that out over the next couple of months. We also are working with our assistant principals related to master scheduling, making sure that those accommodations are made as we look forward. We know there's some shifts that have to occur. Everybody's pretty confident that we can make those happen. Then working with transportation as we move forward for what those pickup times and drop-offs look like for the afternoon and morning events. And then ensuring that our kids have those opportunities for activities and athletics just by communicating out with our community once this moves forward to make sure that families understand what that process looks like. So those are our next steps moving forward.
And before I go to the next group, maybe if we just take them a group at a time, does anybody else have any questions around athletics and activities, correct? I have one more.
Sure.
That I, and I'm sure this is probably your main focus, but one of the things that I hear bubble up is, are we going to negate the benefit of the later start time by moving athletic practices to 6:30 or 7 o'clock or whatever in the morning? And so can you address?
Sure. So we had a conversation, we've always had our practices beforehand, even when we had early morning starts. So we've coordinated so that it's not, so that not every time that there's a practice, our teams being forced to practice during that same time, but so there's a variety, so they get both the benefit of the late start, as well as having the opportunity to practice in a facility at an appropriate time. The most in-depth conversation was specifically related to swimming, and they typically have early morning starts anyway, so they don't feel like it's much of a disruption. As a matter of fact, some of the conversation was around the benefit of them actually even getting to start a little bit later than they do now, which although is not 10:00 in the morning, but you know, it does give that hour fluctuation. So yes, we did talk about that, as well as activities options, but making sure that we're balancing both sides of making sure that we're getting the purpose of moving the time to a later start.
So we're not going to be looking at some sort of wholesale, all the sports that practiced after school are now going to be practicing before school?
No, they've started at both element, I mean, at both middle and high, they've coordinated and are still coordinating, right? We have facility conversations going on around how do they rotate that so that no one's penalized, penalized for all afternoons or all mornings, so that there's some variety in what they have an opportunity to experience. The other piece to that is, we had the discussion as well around elementary. Because of their change in the time, a lot of the activities right now happen in the morning that are related to school. How do we address those in the afternoon? And then continuing to talk about, how do we support parents who, you know, now have a time change difference for their pickup for their kid, where they used to drop them off in the morning for an activity? Like, how are we working through that? Much of that, as much as we plan, really is going to have to see how it plays out over the first couple of weeks of school, and just being really resilient to how we meet those families' needs.
Okay, thanks. Dave?
Dr. Crespo, did you mention, I don't know if I picked it up, about, since we're starting later, and some schools aren't, what do we tend to do for a varsity game, it's a travel game? How many classes? Will the children miss an additional class that they're missing this year?
So I don't know if it, I don't know if it would be specifically additional, because with the multiple high schools, it would be tough to tell. We do have some, depending on their conference, so Loveland High has more further away games just about, just because of their size. Our biggest concern, obviously, is football, because it's a larger number of kids. All of the sports are super important, but we want to make sure that it's the largest number, typically 90 over 100 kids. So what we've talked about, which falls directly in line to what we're doing around competency-based and personalization of learning, we're trying to build capacity so that that last hour of the day allows the students to meet their, whatever athletic requirement they have, physical education, health, wellness, all of those, as often as possible, so that they still will be missing school. All of the schools across the, across the country miss school at some point because of the way their schedule works athletically and the times for the state organizations to start their competition. But we think we've found some ways to be flexible about how that works, so that our students aren't being penalized with specific work. And we even brainstormed doing some other options with some of our closer neighbors, so that we can either be really strategic about how we send work or what that looks like for students to have a quiet space, athletes to have a quiet space while they're in that location. That'll take some time to develop, but we've got at least the strategy of how we're going to approach it in line, and then we'll have to monitor and adjust, because we have certain things that don't impact us and do impact us that haven't impacted other districts, so.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is?
So at this time, the next small group was group number two, Impact Early Childhood. So I'll turn over to Anne Marie Sanchez, who is our elementary, our elementary director.
Madam President, Dr. Shear, members of the Board, had the pleasure of working with this small committee. Some of the major things that we discussed initially were just what the different scenarios could even possibly be, since right now, on Fridays, the early childhood students do not have school. The teachers are doing home visits and such, meetings, collaborating. And so, you know, one of the benefits of them having the late start Wednesdays is that some, you know, since they are on many school campuses, not all of them are individual sites, it'd be great for them to have opportunities to collaborate with the staff as well. So some of the things that we looked at were, what were the hours that students are required to be in school for early childhood? And so if they were off on Wednesday completely, different scenarios that might happen because of that. So for example, if the, if the Fridays went to a Wednesday, then the students basically have two Mondays. They have a Monday, and then they come back to school again on a Thursday. So that was not a favorable option. Then the other option was looking at not doing a late start at all for early childhood. Initially, that was actually under consideration because of, we were thinking that there were possibly only going to be two snow days available if we went to that option where they had a no late, they had a late start, as well as a Friday off. And so that would alleviate, obviously, having two Mondays. So in the end, we were able to find some solutions around different start times. So instead of maybe having a full hour of late start time for collaboration with their school, maybe we would reduce that a little bit, and just knowing that sometimes some people have to leave for duty outside at recess, some staff members might end up leaving a little bit early anyway, and so they would just excuse themselves possibly a little bit earlier, so then they can still participate and collaborate with the school sites that they are located at. But then also, by adjusting those times, we would increase the number of possible days. Also, a survey was done with the early childhood teachers, their preference, to see what they, what they preferred, and it was, it did come back that it was very favorable for them to be able to participate in the late start, so they can collaborate with their buildings, as well as then have the Fridays off. We just wanted to make sure that there was enough time to get all of the standards and objectives in that we need to meet for early childhood, as well as just make it accommodating for parents as well, and not change the schedule too much. So we're still in a little bit of continuation, depending on what time the start time could be. So our committee still needs to meet, but we're, we're really close to the resolution.
Questions for early childhood? Okay, thanks, Anne.
Thanks.
At this time, group three was start times of our K-8 school. So I'll turn over to Tom Tisher, HR Director.
Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Shear, Tom Tisher, Director of Human Resources for the School District. Our committee was charged with the start times for the K-8 schools. The committee consisted of parents and staff from High Plains School, myself, transportation, and Learning Services personnel. The, the factors that we took into consideration were the start times for elementary schools being from 8:00 to 3:10, and then the middle school time being 8:45 to 4:00. And how to find a compromise, how to find a time that worked for the only school we have in the district that has a K-8, both middle and elementary school. So we took into consideration transportation times that that school's location has with the high school, Mountain View, that's located close by, and if and when the kids were going to ride the buses together, continue to do that. And the discussion led us to an 8:20 to 3:35 time for the K-8, so that we honored a earlier start time, sorry, later start time for the middle school kids, but also adjusted accordingly for something that wasn't having on the elementary school kids starting at 8:45 time, and then allowing for the bus transportation to work in that side of town and those things. So there was a lot of specific conversations regarding how, what, when. We did some research on, on districts around the area that have K-8s and elementary and middle schools, and how they adjust those times and things. And so we had some pretty good conversation to get us to that point. We also scheduled one follow-up meeting in November for us to meet as a group and collect information about how this recommended time, if it's put in place, how it's working for the 18-19 school year, so that we can adjust accordingly if needed.
Questions, Board? So it sounds like you're pretty close to finish.
Yes.
Resolution, you pretty much have a resolution.
Yes, the recommendation that we're going to put forward is pretty much finished, yep.
Is that 8:10?
8:20 to 3:35.
And so before it was 7:50?
7:50, I believe, yes, is the start time. That's just, that's just for High Plains, K-8, yes. No, just High Plains.
Well, so, or right now, the committee, you know, we're waiting for all the committees to finish up their meeting, so there's one committee that is still meeting. So, so right now, the committee's leaning towards, and I highlight the word leaning towards because it's not final yet, but the 8:20 to 3:35 start. And then the other, the thing that the Board approved was the elementary start at 8:00. The high school is 8:30, and the middle school is 8:45, start times.
Any questions? Jeff?
In any of the conversations with the parents was a concern expressed from those parents who have kids in the elementary and high school both, that the elementary kids would be coming home earlier than they have in the past. There wouldn't be an older sibling there to look after them, and if so, what were the outcomes of that conversation?
In, in my committee for the High Plains conversation, we did not have that discussion based off of babysitting, custodial care in the afternoons. The, what, what we did have a conversation regarding any- what, what we did have, uh, a conversation regarding anything, um, about the high school time versus the, the elementary time is transportation in that sector of the district, just based off the fact that the High Plains and Mountain View routes have typically been, um, close together in previous years. And with a recommended time like this, they would continue to stay in that direction. I can't speak for the other committees about-
So, so that question was on committee number five. So committee five had a question about older students could no longer pick up younger siblings. So, so that conversation took place on group five. So, so we'll get to that one. I, I know Dorothy isn't here, but I saw Greg, Greg here. So, so I'll just get him prepared, that he may have to present in, uh, the next ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
Okay, is that, okay. Anybody else for High Plains before we let Tom go? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next committee was the Elementary Specials, and I had an opportunity to facilitate that meeting. We had several elementary teachers on it, we had an elementary principal, and we had a parent. Maya, thank you for all the work you did. So, so our discussion was pretty simple, because it had to do, when we had early, early release, we had different wording in the MOU as far as the amount of sections an elementary specialist teacher could teach and be full-time. So currently, right now, with that change, we had twenty-five sections that a elementary specialist teacher would be full-time. We, we had reduced back to twenty-four sections, so twenty-four sections would be a full-time specialist teacher. So that's the wording that we had in the MOU in thirteen-fourteen, when we had the early release, was the last year that we had that.
And, and this change is necessitated because of the Wednesday late start-
Correct.
Rather than the change of start times overall?
Correct, yep.
Okay, all right. Questions regarding that? And, and is that resolved? I mean, will that will go to, does that have to go to negotiations then?
It's, it, it will go to negotiations as a MOU cleanup.
Okay.
But other than that, everything's in place for it.
So it's essentially resolved, okay. All right. And number five, then, is that Greg?
Correct.
How, how many, how many groups total are there?
Five.
Five is the end, okay.
So, oh, Margaret Crespo was in the meeting today, that she could talk to some of that, but specific questions, I would pass that to Greg to kind of answer that, since, since he was part of that.
And what was the title of this one?
The title is Transportation.
And the question, okay, and the question that we brought up was?
Related to the early pickup and the late, the, the high school versus elementary.
So, so what I would recommend is for Margaret to just give an update, briefly what the conversation was, and then turn over to Greg.
I'd like to thank Dr. Severs for bringing it here. Um, so Dorothy could not make it,
so I, um, am comfortable updating. Uh, the conversation was related to, um, care before and after school in the committee, and some of the discussion is currently happening as well, partnering with some of our local partners, um, Boys and Girl, Girls Club, things like that, existing before and after care programs that can provide the support necessary. We've done some, um, preliminary looking at other districts that use a system, where the entire district is doing the before and after care. So we feel like we've got a solid plan moving forward, and we can make a recommendation, obviously, that, um, again, it will depend on the school and where we are. We've done some grant applications and are hopeful, and that we are, hey, thanks for that, and that we're working on a site-based decision-making model for each school, what fits that community, what fits that model of parents, um, and staff. And then the last thing is marketing all of the options that we have, uh, in a really clear way. So as a side note, an example would be when we do the Ignite program, when school's not in session, we rotate that throughout buildings, we get that communication out so that families have somewhere for their, their children to go, and we do the same thing with the marketing of the before and after care. All yours, Greg.
Yes, actually.
Before I, I'm sorry, excuse me, but I will, hello, Board, I'm Greg Grody, the Dean of Service Director for the Teacher Association. I will share one more thing, I don't think I heard it. One of the things we discussed was the challenge with getting the kids after school, because of the tight space between the elementary dismissal and the secondary dismissal, and we had a conversation about how to potentially address that concern. And I don't know if you got a written report from Dorothy or not, but the, the, the options that we presented, so I'm assuming that's, is that correct, Margaret? I don't want to overstate. Okay, so, that was, I didn't hear that discussion, so.
And so when you're saying transportation, you mean district transportation?
Correct, yes.
Buses.
I'll just add that that came up in all of the groups, making sure that we have an appropriate timeline so that students feel valued, they're not getting rushed, pushed out the door, pushed in the door. Um, so that was a conversation and ongoing for all of us. And, um, certainly, transportation is doing a great job of planning what that looks like, to make sure that we're coordinating time. I know that Anne Marie shared before part of that discussion around early childhood, is fit, is making sure that those staff members are out there welcoming those kids in, so that that transition doesn't feel uncomfortable, even though we know have, we have a very tight turnaround. Thanks.
I have one question, and I think it's probably your committee. Um, is there discussion about, at the secondary level, so middle and high school, um, having the building available, you know, those kids don't necessarily need babysitting, but they may need to be dropped off at school at, so if we're looking at an eight-thirty start time, they might need to be dropped off at school at eight o'clock, because they don't get a bus, and it's too far to walk, or they don't want to walk alone, or whatever, right? And the parents need to be off at school. So is there some consideration to, can the building be open at a, at some point, or is that a, a, that's sort of a childcare-type issue, but a little different, because it's not elementary?
So, uh, it would look similar to what we do right now, absolutely. We have lots of families, myself included, who drops their child off, beeps the horn, waves. Um, and we're very lucky, we have incredible staff that are there when, and as they should be when the appropriate time. Lots of students get dropped off, they go out to the playground, there's supervision there. What we do try to make sure that we're communicating with families is that we want to make sure that it's a safe window. Sadly, there are some cases where students get dropped off very, very early, and we, well beyond that window, or well before that window, and we have to make sure that we're communicating with families that there isn't anyone, um, because it isn't reasonable for that, for that timeframe. So we'll continue to do that, that shift of time still exists, it's just a little bit earlier, a little bit later, based on the start time change.
So it's entirely possible that a, that at a high school, even though classes aren't starting till eight-thirty, a kid could be there at quarter to eight?
We have that now.
Okay.
And we have a lot of buildings, frankly, that the kids are there at six-thirty.
And, and the buildings are open, there's somewhere for them to go?
In most cases, yes.
More or less, okay.
I don't want to say all.
Right, right, right. Well, and I know it's different, you know, second, or, uh, middle school versus high school, it's, it's a little bit different, and elementary, but, okay. Any other questions on that? Thank you. And then will you have one, you want to wrap up?
Yep, so, so the next step, sir, would be to wait till all the committees have concluded, have, have another meeting for the facilitators, and talk about recommendations that we'll make to the board. So, so I'm seeing, possibly doing that the first meeting in May, that we would come and make the final recommendations to the board, and answer any questions there.
Okay. Any other questions for Bill before I move on? All right, thank you. Item 5.3, District Audit Advisory Committee Policy Review. Gordon?
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Shear, members of the board. My name is Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. The discussion item, um, for this agenda item, um, relates to the formation of the Audit Advisory Committee. Um, the board will recall, at the last meeting, there was a preliminary draft policy that, uh, was put forth for, um, review. Um, subsequently, after speaking with council and their review of the, the document that was, was brought forth, there was a recommendation that the, the policy be essentially left the way it was, but then, um, have the adoption of bylaws by the committee be a part of the, the formation of this committee. So the, the policy is kept more at a high level, with much more of the details associated with the committee itself, the, the work that they will do, the, the formation of the committee, um, how meetings will be conducted, election of officers, um, replacement of, of vacancies, a variety of different things, will be in much more detail in the bylaws that, um, are, um, being reviewed right now, being drafted and reviewed right now, um, by legal counsel and staff. So the, the recommendation here, or being, having this be a discussion item rather than an action item, is again, for the board to review this, um, this format, and make sure that there's no, um, further questions that the board has. Um, I should mention that the bylaws, while adopted by the committee, the board certainly still has purview over those, um, o, over the language that's in the bylaws, and can adjust those as they deem necessary. Um, but it, it, it does provide much more detail, um, in the bylaws, and keeps the policy at a lesser level. Not a lesser level, but a, a more brief level.
Questions, Board? So at this, excuse me, at this point, this is a discussion item, um, yet, because of the changes that came from last time to this time, and it will be brought forward, um, for final reading next time?
Uh, final reading, preferably at the next meeting for the policy, and then a draft of the bylaws, and then, um, the committee, once formed, would be responsible for adopting the bylaws. But again, the board would have the opportunity to review those bylaws, um, prior to being presented to the committee.
Questions? Paul?
Just had one quick one, this was very well done, so I appreciate that. But, so if someone doesn't finish their term and they need to be replaced, is that something that would show up in the bylaws, or is that?
Absolutely, that would be spelled out explicitly in the bylaws, how to replace vacancies, what the timing of that would look like, what the nomination process would look like, and the, uh, appointment of those people, uh, or that person in this case, um, for any vacancy that may be created.
And Mark, did you raise your hand over there?
Yeah. Again, fantastic job, this is excellent work.
Thank you.
I did have one question. It has to do with, um, on the first page, composition last paragraph. It's more curious than anything. Um, it talks about through, nominated through a process reasonably determined by the superintendent, and approved by board legal counsel. I was curious, what was the rationale behind having the superintendent, um, set up the selection process?
In the simplest of terms, my response, and I discussed this just this afternoon with council, um, the simplest response is board governance versus administration. So this is not to say that, um, what has been proposed at this point is each board member to nominate an individual to be able to, uh, or to serve on the, on the Audit Advisory Committee. Um, this is planning for the eventualities of if there is, um, perhaps, a board member that can't locate somebody that they feel comfortable nominating, or the, it's, uh, that's, that's the most common, I would say, um, item that could occur, that we don't want to change the number of the committee, the total number of the committee, which is nine, which is seven community members, the board treasurer, and the CFO. Um, we wouldn't want to reduce that number, so we have to have a mechanism in place that would allow for, um, additional nominees to take place. So a, again, the board can say, we, we desire to have each board member bring forth a nominee. The, that's the, the governance of the policy, policy governance, and the mechanism for making that happen is those nominations turned into the superintendent, referred, um, or discussed with legal counsel to make sure they're, they're being received in the, the proper way. The superintendent then could bring them forth, or staff, direct staff, to bring forward those nominees for the board's consideration for appointment to the position. So that's the, the, the basic premise, the basic thought pattern behind that sentence.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Everything else, I understood very clearly, it's very plainly written. Excellent, thank you.
That's the work of legal counsel, very much.
Dave?
Yeah, this is a question for the board. Um, in that same sentence, the board shall appoint committee members who have been nominated through a process reasonably determined by the superintendent, and approved by, by a board legal counsel. I think that portion and the board legal counsel should be struck. Here's my thinking. First of all, we trust our superintendent knows what he's doing, including if he needs to have legal advice, he gets it. I don't think it should be the board policy that, um, handcuffs that we have to go to legal counsel for this. It just doesn't make any sense to me. Why don't we just say, "The board shall appoint committee members who have been nominated through a, uh, a process, uh, approved by the superintendent."
So I'm guessing that the board legal counsel put board legal counsel in there?
They did, that is their terminology. Um, this is something that would not need to take place every time. The board, or the legal counsel would, um, look at the, um, look at it initially and say, yeah, the, the superintendent or designee would say, "This is the process for which nomination should be turned in," and then they'll be brought to the board for appointment. Legal counsel would, would look at that initially and say, "Yeah, that process works fine for us." It's not a matter of having to go to legal counsel and have them approve the appointees, or anything like that. It's much more a process, um, question, and in setup of the policy and the bylaws than it is looking at it each time, um, a, a new, uh, nominee, nominee would be, would be brought forth.
So, so my question then is, there's nothing in here, the way I read it, that keeps us from each nominating a person the way we've tried to line it out, right?
Nor from nominating ten people, each board member. And then all of those would be brought forth to the board for appointment.
Well, I think that, I think that point will be clarified in the bylaws. We'll, we'll specify a process in the bylaws that will, um, execute that intent, and it will be one person nominates, each board member nominates one person, but that will be in the bylaws. But again, I just, I just don't like that language in there about the, um, that a lawyer put, seat a lawyer. I think it could, should be struck. Because it, it does say that's what you should do, and whether the superintendent shows us it doesn't have to be done, it says you should do it. So I don't think we should be directing, s, the superintendent has to check the legal counsel. Someone could say, "You're not doing your job, as the board directed you."
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I, I make that motion, that we strike that language. We rewrite the sentence to say, "The board shall appoint committee members who have been nominated through a process determined by the superintendent to be reasonable." That's what I think it should read.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to remove the language and approved by board legal counsel from the last, second to last paragraph there. So it would just read, "Through a process reasonably determined by the superintendent," period, basically?
Uh, uh, I would suggest, does anybody have problem with the thinking that the English is a little difficult there, "Through a process reasonably determined by the superintendent"? That's, that's just an awkward phrase to me. I would just prefer to say, "Through a process determined by the superintendent." I mean, you expect them to act reasonably, it's, it's a, it's a given, right?
Well, once again, I'm guessing that the attorneys put those words in there for attorney reasons, um, but it, do you want to strike, you want to strike that as well?
I, I had trouble understanding that sentence. If I'm the only one, then I don't think we need to strike it, but I thought it was, what I suggested made a little more sense. Stan, do you want to comment on anything there, from your experience? You have vast experience?
My vast experience. Um, either way, it does, it doesn't change anything, um, the context, so. But it, if it's more, you know, if it's more precise that way, I think that certainly is fine, either way.
So it's your motion, Dave, do you want to include reason, you want me to strike reasonably there as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, "The board shall appoint committee members who have been nominated through a process determined by the superintendent," period?
Mm-hmm.
And strike the rest of the sentence. So that's, um, a motion and a second. Is there any d, further discussion on that?
I'm just wondering, so can anybody provide me an example of a process the superintendent may reasonably go through, implied, that if he doesn't check with legal, that he'd end up getting him or herself in trouble, or us in trouble? I'm just thinking, there is, there's, there is a reason they put that phrase in there. So I'm trying to think of the example of what's that covering that may be uncovered if we take that out? Any?
Gordon, any ideas?
I, I couldn't, uh, speak to that. I don't know what that might be, other than to say that, uh, I would think that any, any process adopted by a superintendent would be reasonable.
So, Dr. Shear, so, Dr. Shear, with your many years of experience as superintendent, one, would you never not go to legal counsel, or if you didn't, is there a scenario you could think of where, "Okay, now I'm in trouble, because I didn't and I should have"?
I can't think of one, and I, you know, it's, having the, I have the, the option always to go to legal counsel, so, uh, I can't imagine if I felt, you know, uh, I need to do that, um, I wouldn't take advantage of that.
Okay, so in the reverse, is, do you feel like having those words in there restricts you as the superintendent in any way?
No, not necessarily.
And I guess I, I just want to clarify that legal counsel did write that we should include approved by bo, board legal counsel, is that correct, Gordon? Just, I know it sounds circular.
That is correct.
So I guess I don't understand why we would take it out, if we were, if it, our attorney recom-
recommended that we include it. I just don't see any reason to remove it. It doesn't, it's not a long statement. It's not confusing. If legal recommends it, then we better, to me, we have to follow our legal counsel, and I don't see any negative to having it in there. I don't, I can't imagine a negative to it.
Can I just retort? It's just, I can't understand why we would have to go to legal counsel. We don't go to legal counsel when we change bus schedules. We don't go to the legal counsel when we change times of starts. We don't have to go to legal counsel when the superintendent approves the process. It's just not required, and I just don't like legal counsel inserting this into there. I take objection to that. That's my reason, you know, that's why I made the motion. Everybody will vote the way they feel.
Maybe perhaps because this is a different type of process where we're actually nominating community members, so there's, I have a feeling it's a little bit different than changing a bus schedule, right? Because we're reaching out to the community, the Board is nominating people. That's my guess. I'm not an attorney, but I prefer to follow our attorney's recommendations.
And just a point, a point of clarification as to what, should we make this language change now? It will mean it goes back to legal, correct?
And they could say, "What the heck did you do?"
No, I'm, in all seriousness, it's going to go back to legal. They're going to say, "Yeah, it's okay to take out that language. We don't have a problem with that," or they're going to say whatever they're going to say, because, you know, policy becomes sort of the law, with a little L of the school district, and so they want to make sure that, you know, what we're saying we're going to do doesn't conflict with something we're not supposed to do, or something we have to do. So they're protecting us. They're not, they're not trying to limit our authority. They're trying to protect us, so number one. And then number two, if it has to go to them and come back, that means we have to have a first reading again next meeting and a second reading in May.
I would defer to Dr. Shear's expertise in this area, but I would say-
Or we could call legal.
I just want to be clear how, how, how much we're putting this off if we do this.
First of all, you're, according to the item, you are in discussion tonight.
Correct, not motions.
And so you are really at that point where you're asking questions for determining where we go from here. And since we don't have legal counsel here tonight-
Right.
-to explain this specific language, this is a good topic to bring to their attention if we decide that we need to have them come and explain the importance of that. We can do that, or we can certainly do it through Gordon. But in either case, this is a good conversation to have and say, "These are the kinds of questions that we have right now. Let's, let's find out why that was in there in the first place, specifically from the attorney's point of view, and then we can come back next time with two versions for you to look at, and you can go from there, based on the information we bring back to you."
I don't know what parliamentary procedure is for the Board here, if with a slight adjustment like this, if the language is stricken, if that would require a second first reading, if that's not an oxymoron, or if that, at the next meeting, it could be, yes, here's the language that's changed, here's the redlined version, here's the way the language is now, and it's fine with legal counsel, and it still gives the Board the ability to adopt the policy at that point, on essentially the second reading, a revised second reading.
Okay, so I see that we essentially have two choices here. We've got a motion and a second on the table, so we can, we can vote on the change, or we could, well, either way, and/or we could have further discussion with legal counsel next meeting. We could actually have them here to talk to us about this. So either way, we could either just submit it to them, submit it through Gordon to them, and if they're like, "Yeah, whatever, thumbs up," then if they've agreed and we've agreed, I think we could probably have a sec, call this the first reading and have the second reading next time.
That's correct. I think so.
Or we could have them come and then go from there. So, so I guess I want us to have the vote, and then I think we can decide whether we want them here or not, or whether we just want to do it by phone call and mail. Are we okay with that? Go ahead and call for the vote, the roll call? Yes? Okay. Wendy, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
No.
Pam Howard?
No.
Lori Vizdeword?
No.
Barbara Cruz?
No.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion fails four to three, three to four, I guess. So the language will stay as it is, and this will come back for a second reading April 18th. And just give me one second here, Gordon, before I, go ahead, go ahead.
If I could, I would request permission from Dr. Shear just to, regardless of, not regardless of, but in addition to the vote of the Board just now-
Hold on just a second. Okay, sorry, I couldn't hear you.
So regardless, not regardless, in addition to the decision of the Board just now, I would request permission from Dr. Shear to go back to legal counsel just for a further explanation in case there is a question next time.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I think we need that now, based on the conversation this evening, certainly.
So yes, that's my understanding as well. If we can remove that language and feel comfortable based on what you find out, then that'd be my preference to strike it, but let's find out.
Okay. Yeah.
Specifically, I'd like to have legal counsel take a look at that sentence, because I think it is confusing. You know, it's talking about "and approved by Board Legal Counsel." The question is, okay, is the appointment approved by Board Legal Counsel, or is the nomination process appointed? So if they can take a look at that, see if they can make it a little more straightforward, that'd be awesome.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item 5.4, Budget Update. Gordon, are you gonna, do you guys prefer to have him sit there or come up there? What would you, does it matter? I'm kind of liking it, you better up there, if it's not offensive. I'm sorry, it's just easier, it's a little easier to hear off that microphone. I don't know. Maybe it's me. Nope, it's good.
Again, thank you, Madam President, Dr. Shear, members of the Board. I'm Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the District. The budget update for this evening is intended to cover a legislative update for the education finance-related items. Obviously, there are a lot more out there than just finance that the state legislature is considering, but is this all right? Can everybody hear that?
I can hear. Can you guys not hear out there? I'm wondering if that's what it is. You're, yes, you can hear? You're good? Okay. One other thing, too. I have this up here, so I can see it on my iPad, so I don't think anybody in the audience has a copy, and we don't have overheads today, so I'm willing to sacrifice my copy if anybody's really interested. And don't be shy if you want to come up and grab it. Feel free, because I can look, yeah, because we can look on our devices up here and follow along. In fact, it's better because the print's bigger.
Here's another one.
So, there you go. Sorry, Gordon, thanks. I have to kind of go on the fly a little bit here.
Here's one more. Gordon?
Oh, see how generous we are. Get that. That's the bottom line. Gordon, I'm pointing to the last line on that first page.
That's a great one.
No fair looking ahead, Madam President.
Sorry.
So now hopefully there are enough copies distributed that everybody can have one. This is posted on Board Docs as well, so if anybody wants to refer to it after the presentation, it's certainly there. So a brief, hopefully a brief legislative update, and then an update on the cost formation of the budget part of the process. The legislative update for education-related funding, the Joint Budget Committee makes recommendations for what they would like to see in the long bill. It's called the Long Appropriations Bill, which is the overall budget for the state. So the Joint Budget Committee met last week and put forth these recommendations for items to be included in the state budget when it's debated in the Senate and House at the Capitol. First, in no particular order, but just following the list that's, as it's proposed here, 500 million to transportation for roadwork. I think we all know that there's a big initiative out there to repair the state highways, bridge systems, all of that. There's some, some interest in, for the state to issue bonds, and then if they do issue bonds, the overall need for construction or for state highways is more in the billion-dollar range, billions of dollars range, 13 to 15 billion. So to accommodate that over the next however many years, the prod, the proposal, one proposal would be to issue bonds at the state level, for the state of Colorado to issue bonds, and then that would require some sort of appropriation annually for a 20-year, 25-year, or 30-year period, whatever the length of the bonds are, to be able to service the principal and interest on those. This is outside of that. This does not contemplate issuing those bonds, but it's a $500 million infusion that the Joint Budget Committee has recommended to go to the State Highway Department for at least starting the most critical or necessary repairs for the 1819 school. I refer to everything as 1819. From a school perspective, it is the 2019 budget for the state of Colorado. Mr. Banks, Dr. Banks, sorry.
I don't expect to have this answer, but I'll take a shot at. Do you know if there's any discussion that this is associated with what's supposedly coming out of Washington and Trump's putting together his infrastructure bill that will have to be matched by states? Is there any discussion this is laying the foundation for something like that coming?
I certainly didn't attend the Joint Budget Committee hearing when they made these recommendations. There could be some interest in that. I don't think it's spelled out explicitly that, yes, this is in deference or in response to those initiatives from a federal level. I think, this is personally my opinion, I think this is a state initiative that doesn't necessarily relate to anything from the federal level. The next item is $225 million set aside that the Joint Budget Committee, or JBC, recommended for a transfer to PARA, the Public Employees Retirement Account. This is, you'll see different bills out there. We'll talk about one coming up in just a minute, that is for the reform of PARA, to try to shorten their unfunded liability. There was different discussions in different groups of how, of what might be adequate in this, in this area, whether the dollars should come from the state to each one of the divisions that participate in PARA, meaning the school district, the school division is one, state employees is another, highway patrol is another, that the state could make those allocations to those individual divisions, and those individual divisions then apply those funds to PARA for a variety of things that we'll talk about in a second here. This instead is intended, the Joint Budget Committee's intent with this is to transfer the 225 million directly from the state to the PARA plan. 150 million was proposed by the JBC as a buy-down of the budget stabilization factor, which was formerly known as the negative factor. The overall state balance in that is 822 million at the current level. This would buy that down, obviously, by 150 million, which would in turn increase the PPR that would be available to each district across the state. Just as a frame of reference, Thompson's share of that, any buy-down of the negative factor, would be about 1.67%. So that's Thompson's portion of the funded pupil count across the entire state, is approximately 1.67%.
So you're going to make us do the math?
2.25 million.
So, and before you go on-
2.25 million.
If there's any other funding that's allocated according to student count, we could still use that same factor if we wanted to figure it out in our heads?
It depends on what, what formula, what figure you're referring to, like the PPR from a base level. The Amendment 23 requires base funding, the base funding per pupil to go up at the rate of growth plus inflation each year, typically the rate of inflation, which is around 3%. So that, that would not, that wouldn't apply to that.
I was just thinking if there's any other extra pots of money. It looks like this year they're doing this pot of money kind of thing, and it, you know, like the school safety grants. If that were to be allocated based on a per pupil fact rationale, we could use that same percentage.
Grants that we'll get to as the last item on this list is a little bit different, because grants are applied for, it's a competitive grant process, where in the long bill, another item that we'll come to in just a minute is 35 million that was proposed by the House, House of Representatives to be applied for SROs and school safety. That would be a reasonable assumption that they would use a similar PPR, or a similar, yeah, per pupil, per-funded pupil allocation method for that, that type of funding. Not guaranteed, because there's other initiatives, like the next one on the list, $30 million to pre-K through 12. PK is pre-K through 12 education for additional funding to rural schools. This was something that was done last year, that $30 million for small and rural districts was allocated. Obviously, Thompson being 17th out of the 178 districts, so in the top 10% from a size standpoint of funded pupils, we did not participate in that. I believe the threshold was 6,000 students and below. Districts with 6,000 students and below, Thompson is around 16,000 students, so we did not participate in that. $30 million last year that was allocated, it's been proposed to be included again in the state's budget for the 2019 year.
So when they're discussing these things, are they using the words supplement rather than supplanting?
There are no, from the Joint Budget Committee, no, there weren't those, those recommendations. It was dollars that were set aside, with my assumption or my interpretation of that being supplemental, not supplanting. The reason these, these items are coming forth this year is the state anticipates in the 2019 year 1.3 billion more than what they had, what they anticipated having, and that's based primarily on two factors. It's really three factors. It's the increased assessed valuation that has taken place across the state, not just in Thompson School District boundaries, but across the state from an assessed valuation standpoint, so that affects the state share, the state equalization or backfill, as you'll hear that referred to from the School Finance Act funding. There's less that the money has to contribute to schools because more is being collected locally. Again, it doesn't change the amount. Any district would be funded based on the formula, but it changes the allocation of how much is state share versus how much is local share. And the higher assessed valuations locally means that more is being collected locally, meaning the state can, has to contribute less to reach the same net, or same total dollar amount for school finance funding. That's the first item. Second item would be increased population, meaning higher sales tax, so there's more goods being purchased in the state by a higher population, meaning state income tax, or state sales tax revenue has increased. So that's the second component. The third main component would be the impact of the, the assumed impact of the changes to the federal tax code, that there will be more state tax, state income tax revenue available because of the changes to the federal tax code. And I'll explain that very briefly. The federal tax code starts with income, what individuals have earned. Then there's credits and deductions that take place to get to a total of taxable income. At the federal level, with the new program that's in place, deductions and credits have decreased, meaning taxable income has increased at the state level, but, I'm sorry, at the federal level, but the federal tax rates have decreased, resulting in typically across, you know, I'm speaking in averages here or in generalities, a lower tax rate for most Americans. Colorado takes the taxable income from the federal return. That's the starting point for the Colorado state tax return. This Colorado state income tax rate did not change from 4.63%, meaning the state starts with a higher taxable income from the federal return, same tax rate that they've had in the past, which means more revenue anticipated to be collected at the state level. The problem is knowing what that number is. I've seen estimates all the way from 30 million of additional revenue at the state level to 300 million at the state level. So it's a big unknown, because there was a big push at the end of last tax year of 2017 with people prepaying property taxes- of twenty seventeen with people prepaying property taxes, and that could have skewed those numbers. That's why it's such a wide range of thirty million to three hundred million. But that's that additional one point three million that the state is anticipating, one point three billion in additional revenue is what's allowing them to do these, these type of adjustments or propose these type of adjustments for twenty nineteen. The next item on there is the ten million dollars for, to, to address teacher shortages. Again, that's a rural initiative. The, the rural districts are really struggling to be able to attract and retain teachers in the rural communities. And then seven million dollars that's been set aside or proposed to be set aside, I, I keep saying set aside, but these are all proposals by the Joint Budget Committee. Nothing has been decided at this point, but a seven million dollar grant, seven million dollars for grants for school safety. Again, that would be a competitive application process where districts would apply, explain what they would intend to use those dollars for, and then see if they were, where they stacked up in all the grant applications that were received. So those are the, the recommendations from the Joint Budget Committee. Now we'll move on into some specific bills. I'm sorry.
A quick question on the school safety grants. Is that, are those grants available to do district-wide initiatives as well as at the individual building level?
It, my understanding would be if a district were to submit an application and be awarded some of those grant dollars, they could be, the, the district would have discretion on how those dollars could be spent, provided they were on safety and security. So it could be at the district level, it could be at the individual school level.
Could be for one school, could be for all schools.
Now moving on to just two or three bills that are, are germane to school finance. House Bill eighteen thirteen twenty-two is the long appropriations bill. It's called the long bill. That's the state budget essentially. It initiated in the House last week. There was one amendment that was made to that. So the, the, the long bill is built based on the Joint Budget Committee's recommendations, those items we just talked about. There's one, one amendment that was proposed in the House and passed, which was thirty-five million dollars more to education, and the intent was that that would be used at each district level for SROs, the school resource officers or police officers in schools, or security systems within the schools. So improved single point of access or cameras or communications or whatever that might be. There, there were no specifics assigned to that as how that would be distributed. So that's one item, Madam President, as you referred to, that I would say a reasonable expectation would be that they would allocate that to districts based on the funded pupil count ratio, which in our case is one point six seven percent, which, one point six seven percent of thirty-five million would be about five hundred thousand that the district would have to spend on those particular initiatives. Key comment at the bottom there is from the state budget perspective, there is much work yet to be done. So the House, the House introduced the long bill, budget bill, they passed it, it moves on to the Senate, they take out the amendments that the House put in so they can look at it for, with a fresh set of eyes, if you will. Then any amendments that the Senate might put forth, then a joint committee between the House and Senate would, would look at those amendments and debate and determine what will or will not be in the long bill. Once the long bill is established, there is a separate bill, which is the School Finance Budget Bill. That, that's a bill yet to become that spells out a lot more details on specific funding for schools across the state of Colorado. Is everybody ready to run for legislative office at this point? I'm sure I'm invigorating everybody with this presentation, but the next bill that's out there or that I've put on this is House Bill twelve thirty-two. This is the new school funding distribution formula. You could have heard it referred to as the superintendent's model. There are a hundred and seventy-one of the hundred and seventy-eight superintendents in the state of Colorado that have endorsed this proposed change in the formula for the way school finances, the way dollars are allocated. So the School Finance Act was passed in nineteen ninety-four. There have been no substantive changes to the formula since nineteen ninety-four. It's one of the oldest non-modified school finance acts that's in place in the United States today. So this, this formula would direct more dollars, specifically allow funding for districts that have higher populations of students of need. And that could be special ed population, it could be gifted and talented, it could be English language learners, it could be the poverty factor, as they're calling it now, which is the free and reduced lunch count roughly defined. So it's a, a formula that directs more dollars to the districts that have higher proportion of those students and adjusts the, the dollars accordingly. The key to this is that the bill, the last bullet point, the bill only takes effect if there is an additional revenue source associated with, with this, that's tied to the superintendent's funding model. Meaning with the restrictions of Tabor that are in place, no tax increase can take place without a vote of the people. So there's an init, an initiative underway right now to gather the necessary signatures to get a ballot item on the ballot in November that is a graduated income tax schedule that would affect taxpayers within the state of Colorado. It starts at earners at a hundred and fifty thousand and up would have an incremental tax increase to their rate of the four point six three percent. I think it goes up a quarter of a percent. So if the taxable income is one hundred and fifty to one hundred and seventy-five thousand, it would be four point six three percent plus point two five percent for the individuals, for the state income tax. If it's one seventy-five to two hundred, it would be four point six three plus point five percent, up to two fifty, I think two hundred and fifty thousand is where the adjustments take place. The fiscal note that's been attached to this, and fiscal note is the forecast by the Legislative Council on what the, the increased revenue would be should this state initiative get on the ballot and then subsequently pass in November, would be about one point six billion dollars. It would be specifically tied to education, so it would not go into the state's general fund, it would go specifically to education. And would then, the, the revised funding formula would then kick in, should that be adopted by the House and the Senate. House Bill twelve thirty-two, which is that revised formula, if it were to pass in the legislature, it would have five years, a five-year sunset in order to have funds dedicated to that, meaning a ballot initiative would have to take place within five years, which would increase the state income tax to be able to fund this model. Questions on that? No, there's a lot of details there. Senate Bill two hundred is modifications to PARA to eliminate unfunded liability. The current unfunded liability is if, if the plan stays the way it is right now with contributions that are going in from an employer and employee standpoint, less payout, payments that are taking place for retirement benefits, it would be, take seventy-eight years to make the plan fully funded, meaning it has to be funded at eighty percent. Right now it's funded at forty-eight percent. Not meaning that PARA is going to run out of money, it just means that it's continually rolling to get to a more defensible position, is the word that's been used in the past. That's an important consideration because that could affect, start affecting if there's no PARA reform that takes place, to shorten that window from seventy-eight years to thirty years, which is what the, the plan is here. Without a, a good plan in place, it could start affecting rating, from the rating agencies, Moody's and Standard and Poor's, it could start affecting their ratings of the state of Colorado and any division that had, that takes part in PARA, including school districts. And that's an important consideration for any school district that were to go for a bond election. You have to go through a rating process to know what your credit rating is. So it could start having an impact on that. It has not up to this point, but that's something to consider for the future. So there's a lot of, of moving parts in this bill, in, in the PARA proposal versus this bill. And in the appendix, there's a, a document that shows the comparisons between what PARA originally proposed and what Senate Bill two hundred includes. As the Denver Post so eloquently put it, there's something in this bill for everybody to hate. So it's a, a shared sacrifice from employees, employers and retirees. I won't go into all the details there, but a couple of the highlights or lowlights, as they may be, would be an increase in the employee contribution from eight percent to eleven percent over the next two and a half years, meaning that would start in January first of twenty eighteen, so our next fiscal year. There would be a half a percent increase to employee contributions, another half a percent increase on January first of twenty nineteen, and then one percent each January first after that. That's one of the, the key changes. There is one of the key items in here that will be wrestled with at the legislative level is a defined contribution plan versus a defined benefit plan. Right now PARA is a defined benefit plan, meaning that it's spelled out that for every year of service that a, a member has, they get two point five percent of the three highest years average salary. That's a defined benefit plan. Defined contribution plan means that, and those dollars stay in the plan, in a defined benefit plan. In a defined contribution plan, it works more like a 401K where the dollars would be invested, the, the individual member, individual employee has the ability to invest those dollars as they see fit. There's portability with that plan, meaning if they left the public sector and went to the private sector that did not participate in PARA, they could take that with them as an IRA or some other vehicle, investment vehicle. There's various other changes in there that affect both retirees and employees both. The employer increase proposed by PARA was a two percent increase over the next two years to the employer contribution rate, which right now is twenty point one five percent. So that would take it to twenty-two point one five percent compared to a social security, for instance, which is seven point six five percent contribution by the employee and the employer for a total of fifteen point three percent. So a, a variety of different pieces in, in this, in this legislation. It has passed the Senate, it's with the House right now for their consideration and debate. So the, in the appendix, the last page of the presentation, there is a comparison again between PARA's originally, original plan and what Senate Bill two hundred looks like right now without any amendments that may be made to it. That's the end of the legislative update. Thankfully, people are still awake after that. Moving on to budget update for Thompson specifically, here's the preliminary comments that I'll have from a cost standpoint. So when we talk about costs at the district level, we're talking about FTE, which is full-time equivalent, which is really employment-related costs. So it's salaries, it's the PARA contribution, it's the Medicare contribution, it's the health dental and life contributions that are provided for employees. So there's FTE and non-FTE, so employment and non-employment related costs that we'll talk about. Included in the FTE comments at this point on the figures we'll see in just a second are steps and columns increase of two point seven five percent. And to take a moment to explain what that is, the, the licensed staff is on salary schedules that dictate steps and columns. Steps in general, in, in loose terms, meaning one year of experience, each step, each year of experience means one more step on the, on the pay scale. Columns are as education is gained by the licensed staff, going from a bachelor's degree to a bachelor's plus fifteen hours, bachelor's plus thirty hours, to masters, all the way to doctorate are the columns. So we look at, we, we look at all the employees, the, all the licensed employees in the district and where they are on that grid, which cell they're in. If you imagine a big spreadsheet, we could have five people that are bachelor's degree and four years' experience. We could have thirty-seven people that are master's degree and twelve years' experience. All those, all those people are looked at, and we anticipate that everybody would move one step down, meaning one more year of experience, and about twenty-two percent of the people will move, the employees will move one column each year. When we move, make those movements compared to the current salaries, that, that analysis yields the two point seven five percent salary increase for the licensed staff's schedule. That same two point seven five percent, as has been done in the past, is then applied to the classified staff and the APT or Administrative Professional and Technical Staff. So that is in the numbers that we're talking about here, two point seven five percent increase. These figures also include the PARA rate of twenty point one five percent. If the board will recall, in the past number of years, there's been a point five percent increase in the PARA rate each January that's taken place. That was from five years ago, the legislation that was passed by the legislators at the Capitol that said the employer contribution would have to increase. So it's gone up five percent over the la, nearly five percent or at five percent over the last five years. So it's been an increase that's taken place. So there's no current legislation that says that rate should go higher. The PARA reform bill could impact that, but there's nothing determined yet at this point. So it's twenty point one five percent for the employer's rate of PARA contribution. This also includes the one point four five percent, which is a statutory rate for Medicare. That's the, the Medicare portion that the federal government dictates. This also includes the statutory increase of the minimum wage to eleven dollars and ten cents an hour, which is mandated to take place by January first, twenty nineteen. The election that we have made as staff for the board's consideration when the, the preliminary budget is presented, is that that is brought forward to January, I'm sorry, to July first at the beginning of the fiscal year rather than mid-year when it's mandated. It, it makes it easier to administer, certainly because there's one pay assignment rather than two pay assignments that have to go into effect for those people that are, are impacted by that. The impact of that with the PARA and the Medicare and the increase to the minimum wage, so the increase to the minimum wage is about a thirteen thousand dollar increase for the district from prior year. Health, dental and life insurance, the board has approved, two meetings ago, I believe, the renewal, unheard of in the environment that we're in, but a decrease in the health rate that's out there. So the monthly premium for health, dental and life goes from six hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents per month to six hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents per month for the eighteen nineteen school year. And you can see what each component is, their health being obviously the largest of those. For an annual premium that's provided for all full-time equivalents, so for every one point oh FTE, seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars that's provided by the district for health, dental and life insurance premiums. Employees have to work at least a fifty percent schedule to be eligible for the health, dental life benefit, and then it's prorated on the, on their basis of their time that they work. So if they are a three-quarter time person, they would get three-quarters benefit of, of that premium cost. Disability insurance is also included, that's ten dollars a month per employee or a hundred and twenty dollars a year, and there's been no change in that rate from the prior year. The next page shows you what those costs look like by classification. So we look at licensed, classified, APT, and then the total. The highlight that I'll point out is in the bottom right quadrant, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase based on all those things. Again, you'll see salaries, PARA, Medicare, health, dental, life and disability insurance. That's a bit of a skewed number because the, of the decrease that we saw in the health, dental, life premium, where some districts are seeing double-digit increases, we actually saw a two point five percent decrease. So there's, that number is a bit skewed from what we, we typically see. I want to point out two things that this does not include. This is a preliminary, as we continue to work through the staffing, we look at every position in the district, we're very precise with this information to make sure we're capturing all the people. But there are some last-minute changes that have taken place that will increase that number by about two hundred thousand from a salary, salary and benefits perspective. And also, also a very key component that is not included here, and there's no indication from the state legislature yet on what and there's no indication from the state legislature yet on what, how it should be included. One of the changes in the para reform is a change in the net-to-gross calculation. You'll hear it referred to. So any employee that has Section 125, which is a Section 125 of the IRS tax code, if they have those type of deductions that are taking place, meaning if an employee elects to go from beyond the employee-only coverage, which is provided, and pay for family coverage, that incremental amount between what the employee-only coverage is to what family coverage is would now be para-includable wages. So it's a good news, bad news situation, especially, well, for employees and employer both. For the employees, it means the average salary, when they're considering in retirement their three highest years of average salary, that is included. So they have a higher annual salary, higher annual average salary. The bad news is that that increased amount would now be subject to the para contribution. So eight percent now for employees going to 11 percent. So for the employer, it's the same thing. Whatever that amount is would apply back to the employer percentage too, which is 20.15 percent. So it's that difference in insurance benefits, it's the flex spending if an employee participates in that program, dependent care. Those are the three main ones, a tax-deferred savings plan. All of those four items would now be considered para-includable. So it would increase the employee's average annual salary, but it also means contributions have to be paid on those amounts. What's not clear is if that 225 million that the Joint Budget Committee has recommended transferring to para directly from the state covers that employer portion or it does not. The assumption here is that it does not cover that, but I have not built that in. That number has not been built in. That is a $650,000 annual increase to the numbers that you see here if the employer portion of those Section 125 plans has to be included. So that is not reflected here.
Also, there's still talk, this is the latest thinking, but I heard today, they're still thinking the employer has to contribute more to para. So that's not reflected either if that came to pass?
That is correct. This is assuming that the employer rate stays at 20.15 percent rather than going to something higher than that. Questions from an FTE perspective? That shows you the number of FTE in each category as well as the dollars associated with it. Non-FTE comments, these are, again, non-FTE is anything not related to employment. So it's utilities, it's professional services, it's the facilities care, it's repairs and maintenance, it's capital projects. It's those types of things that are non-employment-related. It does include in non-FTE extra-duty contracts, extra hours, substitutes, those things, because those are considered outside of a normal pay assignment that would be wrapped into FTE costs. So those costs are captured in non-FTE. But I've highlighted here or low-lighted here some of the big increases that we're anticipating for the 1819 year from a non-FTE perspective. And again, in descending order from cost to amount. Special education out of district placement, that number is significantly larger in this year's budget, in the 1718 budget than we anticipated. So we're building that in for next year, a substantial increase. That represents students, special ed students that are on an IEP that have needs that the district is not able to serve, and we have to arrange, make arrangements to have those students be educated out of district, be transported out of district and be educated out of district. It's an unfunded mandate from the federal government. The district has no leeway in that, in that we have to service those students that have those needs. And if we don't have those abilities within the district, there's other arrangements that have to be made. So that's the largest single item that we anticipate for an increase. Utility prices, we're seeing an increase in those from a national, natural gas and electricity standpoint, as well as the anticipated further erosion of some of the outdated heating and cooling systems, primarily heating systems that we have in the district as well that were less efficient. So we anticipate 350,000 increase in that line item. Workers' comp premiums, and really that's included, what should be included with that is also the property and liability insurance. So we've had some, our claim history, like we've seen in the health claims, our experience rating, it's called. Our experience rating in the health area has been very favorable, meaning those premiums have come down. From this standpoint, we're anticipating increases. We've had several instances of flooding in a building from sprinkler systems that have leaked, that have caused damage. And certainly, that's why we have the insurance, so we don't have to pay the full amount. We just have to pay the deductible. But the insurance company, just as they do from each of our personal policies, whether it's auto or house or anything, when they see those experience claims start increasing, they correspondingly typically increase premiums. That's what this is referred to, referring to. Workers' comp is also an area that we've seen more claims this year than we've had in the past. A lot of those are largely due to incidents involving student behavior, where people, teachers, paras have been injured from, had a claim, had to seek medical attention for student behavior issues. That's what's driven that up, so we're anticipating a $250,000 increase in that category. The School Resource Officer Program, we're in discussions right now to determine what we can do. Right now, we have coverage in Loveland, within the Loveland city limits, from the Loveland Police Department. And here in Berthoud, we are serviced by the Lurmer County Sheriff's Office from an SRO or School Resource Officer perspective. We anticipate those costs to go up 200,000. This is one item that could be, should that 35 million that we talked about earlier be adopted into the long bill, the state budget, and then subsequently into the school finance budget, that's something that our incremental share, provided we got incremental funding, which I believe we would if that were the case, this would be something that that could be used for to offset. So again, a lot of unknowns, both from a revenue perspective at the state level as well as an expenditure level of some additional funding that we could have that could offset this. Same thing with 150 million for the buy-down of the negative factor or budget stabilization factor. There's no guarantees that that will take place. It's just what the Joint Budget Committee has recommended at this point. So our legislators will continue debating that. But in the meantime, we'll make best estimates of what we think a reasonable scenario might be from both a revenue and expenditure standpoint, with the intent of the next meeting, April 18, to have a preliminary budget at a fairly high level, but a preliminary budget for the board as well as a high-level three-year plan with the assumptions listed for what goes into that from an enrollment standpoint, from a PPR standpoint, and from a cost escalation standpoint that we would anticipate, as well as some potential reductions in the budget in order to meet the board's objective of having a balanced budget in the 2019, 2020 school year.
Can I ask you a quick question about the SRO addition? Is that an additional $200,000 for the same level of service or would that be an increased level of service?
We're talking about what the level of coverage that we have right now. We're under those discussions right now with the City of Loveland, primarily with the police department. I'd rather not get into the details at this point as we look at the IGA. We're having meetings, collaborative meetings with the department right now to make sure that we have adequate coverage in the heightened environment that we're in, that the country is in, not just Thompson, but the country. This has been a topic that's been addressed in several groups that I'm involved with from my counterparts in larger and smaller districts. This is something they're looking at. So it would be anticipated to be a, I'll say, a comparable level of coverage, but with some refinements in what that coverage looks like with the language in the IGA.
I was gonna say, this is an example where it goes back to my question about supplement versus supplant. Because I think they probably intended to be supplement, but the way you just phrased it is, we would anticipate this supplanting. I just want to be careful. We put it into our budget. Are they really going to allow us to come back and then supplant that later on or not?
From a joint budget committee perspective, again, I don't, obviously, I'm not an elected official and I don't sit on the Joint Budget Committee, which is one of the most powerful, if you will, of the committees at the state Capitol. My impression of their intent is this would be supplemental, not supplanting anything that we're doing right now.
So if we put this in our budget, are they going to come back and say, okay, now you have this money we're giving you, we wouldn't be able to take it out? We'd still have, so your point being the cost may be offset if the proposed revenue stabilizes, but it may not, because if we put it in the budget, it may not get offset?
Correct. If the 35 million is not authorized in the state budget, if that funding does not materialize, regardless whether it does or does not materialize, the intent would be to include that in our budget. The offset would be the revenue that would come in to offset that cost. We would have the cost in our budget regardless. We would anticipate having that cost in the budget regardless, so an increase of 200,000. But we'd also expect, so let's say that total budget is 550,000, that line item, for SRO services that we have, and we get 550,000 as our share of the 35 million. Our expenditures would still show the 550,000, but our revenue would go up by 550,000 as well. So in my mind...
I hear that as supplanting, and I just want to make sure that we don't run into that problem.
If I may? The final budget isn't approved until when?
Mid-May typically.
Okay, what we will do is, prior to that, it's a great question, Dr. Banks. We will make sure that we properly build the budget not to reflect a supplant, if in fact that language is in there. I understand the question, and I think your question's a good one. Because until, we won't be building that final budget until that information is actually finalized in terms of whether it's categorical or not. But I can tell you that we will be paying very close attention and properly developing a strategy to make sure we don't get penalized for supplanting. Good question.
Just a couple more non-FTE items that are anticipated for increases on the next page, page eight of the deck. There's the recruit and retain initiative that the board authorized earlier this year at an expected cost of 157,000 for the 1819 school year. Transportation of those special education students that are referred to earlier that we have to service out of district. There's a request for an increase in the transportation of those students. Internet bandwidth, we have, from the work of Matt Kuhn and the ITS department, has increased the bandwidth or is in the process of increasing bandwidth across the district. So we have an additional expenditure for that. But conversely, or very similar to the discussion we just had on the supplement or supplant conversation, there are E-rate reimbursements that are available for some of those costs. So we would see our E-rate reimbursement revenue increase to offset a majority of this $100,000 increase cost. The next bullet point, generally, we look at our non-FTE costs and apply a 3% inflationary factor to the prior year. But we look at those line item by line item and say, is that reasonable? Would we expect that increase? Can it be something less than that? Does it have to be more than that based on the analysis that we do? So that's the preliminary placeholder, but that's subject to discussion and change as well. So right now, where we're at in the process is scrubbing that list of requests primarily from a non-FTE perspective that have come from each department, having conversations with them, prioritizing, and saying, what can we have with two or three different revenue scenarios? What would we be able to reasonably afford, if you will, as a district to get to a fund balance, a use of fund balance that we think might be amenable for the board's consideration? Those conversations will be able to be had at the April 18 board meeting.
Thanks, Gordon. Questions, board? All right.
Stunned silence with that presentation.
Well, we were asking questions as we went along, so...
True.
Okay. All right, thank you. You might as well just hang out right there, because item 5.5 is review, revision of some finance policies. Let's see. DKA, DKG, I can't even read them, no, DG, sorry. DGADGB and DKA and DKAB.
So I don't know if, thank you, Madam President. I don't know that you have copies of these, but again, they're on board docs. These are really housekeeping items on these three policies. They're three business services policies. It's exciting things like changing the title from Executive Director of Business Services to Chief Financial Officer to reflect the current structure that we have in the department. Really, that's the crux of all three of these changes are just housekeeping changes to get titles correct with our current structure. These are for your consideration that I would ask for the board to consider for revision at the next meeting.
Any questions, board, on those changes? Literally a couple of red lines on there. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to item 5.6, Superintendent Search Candidate Review. As you all may or may not be aware, we've been interviewing superintendent candidates. We did that all last week. We had four finalists. They were interviewed by the board for about two hours apiece each night. They were interviewed by five different stakeholder groups, which consisted of a parent slash community group, a student group, a teacher group, a classified employee group, and APT, Administrative Professional and Technical Group. And they presented, so we did the interviews, and then we had some discussion on Friday afternoon, I believe, about these candidates. And we were also presented with the information from those stakeholder groups as to their insights on the candidates that they interviewed, their suggestions, their questions about some of the candidates. We presented a few extra questions, I believe, that day, Dr. Sebers, that you came back with answers to, correct? We had a couple of questions that you should have all received an email on that with those answers. And I guess before, you know, I'm going to open it up to just have some more, to continue the discussion basically that we were having on Friday. But Dr. Sebers, is there any information, any new information, any updated information, any timeline information that you need to share with us?
So there is no new information. I had sent you an email to all the board members about the additional resources that you had asked for from McPherson and Jacobson. The other point I would highlight is on March 21, the board meeting, the board announced who the four finalists were. So Colorado statute and the state of Colorado, the board cannot make any decisions on the new superintendent and make an announcement until 14 days have passed. So they couldn't make a decision. Tomorrow would be the first day that is the earliest. So I just want to highlight that timeline.
So just to clarify, we won't be making any final decision tonight. So if that's what you're looking for tonight, I'm sorry to disappoint you. But we will have some discussion and anticipate, we could make that decision at our special meeting tomorrow night at 7 o'clock in the boardroom, but we're not required to. So just kind of to clarify that, because it gets kind of confusing when you're counting the days and, you know, what we're going to do when. So I'm just going to open it up for some general discussion and... Don't all speak at once. Would you guys prefer that we, how would you want to do this? Would you like us to take a look at each of the candidates again? Would you like us to? If there's not an objection to that, we can go ahead and do that?
I think that's the fairest way to approach it.
All right.
So everybody gets a fair shake.
Let me get my notebook out here. So our, sorry. So our first candidate was Dr. Kim Huff from, she's from Virginia. Yeah, she was from, I can't remember the name of the school district, but she was from Virginia, basically suburban Washington DC school district. So let's go ahead and start with her. So, let's go ahead and, and start with her. And grab the microphone from me, Barb. If you look like you're going to talk, feel free to take it.
Well, she was a candidate that we considered strongly at first, but realizing after we got results back and saw the turnout of the small groups, that we realized perhaps that that's not the one that would be well-received, I guess, is what I would put.
Best fit.
Best fit.
Anybody else? Commentary?
Nothing really extra, just, again, she, she's a very strong candidate, and we appreciate her coming in front of us, but in comparing her to the other candidates in, in the fit, and just some thoughts that, yeah, she just might not be ready for this district at this point in time. So I'm not strongly considering her at this point.
You know, the, the interesting thing, and this is just an aside, but the interesting thing when you're interviewing these candidates is, you know, we, we take all these notes about the questions we ask them. And I, as individually, learned some really interesting things about how things are done in other school districts and other parts of the country, and in Colorado and in other parts of the country. And I just wish that we could take all the good parts of every one of those and all the good parts of every candidate and, and put them all in a bucket, but unfortunately, we can't do that. Although that's not to say we might not steal some of these ideas. That some of these, that some of these candidates brought forward.
I don't think they're patented.
No, no, there were no trademarks on any of these items. Yeah, and so some of them were really, really pretty great. If, if nobody else has any further comments on Dr. Huff, I can move on to Dr. Mark Schaefer, who comes to us from Boulder Valley School District in Boulder, Colorado. He's currently a Assistant Superintendent there. I don't remember the exact title, but I might be able to find it here. Secondary schools, yeah, that sounds about right.
Secondary School Leadership, that's his title. Assistant Superintendent of Secondary School Leadership. So all the, the principals report to him in Boulder School District for secondary.
He, he actually came out as a preferred candidate from two of the stakeholder groups. So keeping in mind, there were five stakeholder groups, and Dr. Schaefer ranked highly with two of those groups.
Those were the Administration, Professional, and Technical, and then also the Community and Parent Stakeholder Group. He was ranked the highest by those two groups.
I'll start with a few general thoughts. You know, after we got through the first four rounds, honestly, he, he wasn't rising to the top for me, but as I, time has passed, I think I was subjecting myself to a little recent bias in that every time I heard the next candidate, they were very, very good, and I liked them. Well, then they moved on to the next, so I, you know, I was very familiar with the ones at the end. So once I was able to step back and, and reflect on it, and went through my notes and stuff, and I realized that I really didn't have any strong negatives to him. There was always some things we said, well, I wish you would add this or this that he might do better at. But he was one of the few that I did not find any strong negatives about. So he's back in strong consideration for me again. Originally, maybe he wasn't, but.
I would echo that, that, that looking back, you know, you, you're, you're in the moment and you're, you're talking to all these candidates, and then you have a weekend and a couple of days to think about it. And I would echo that, that I didn't really find any negatives there. Jeff, are you raising your hand down here?
I liked Dr. Schaefer real well myself. One of the things I liked about him is I feel he's ready right now to step into the position. He has a, a broad background. He's worked in all areas. I thought he had great leadership. Some of the things I took out of the different letters of recommendation that he had and also gathered from himself is, he's very authentic, trust, calm, thoughtful. He's big on teamwork. I liked the way he listened. I noticed when we were talking to him that he was a very good listener. He seemed very good with communications. And he comes across as a strategic planner. If you look at his history, again, he's got steady progression. He's had a lot of leadership responsibilities. He fills the role well. And I see him working outside the school district as well. He was one of the founders of Lead Boulder Leadership, which is a very successful program that they have in Boulder. And everything I saw about him said, students first, which shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. I think that's probably true with everybody. But I felt like it was really, really magnified with him that he's somebody that will put students at the, the front at all times. I did call his current superintendent and spoke with her, and she spoke very, very highly of him, Dr. Stevenson. She said that she felt he could step into this position right now and, and perform it admirably. He's somebody who'll be able to get along with staff, teachers, boards. He's just a real team player. So I liked him real well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mark, I didn't see you.
Yeah, it's not, not quite curved, like. Perfect. So, yeah, I wanted to echo most of the things that I've, everything that I've heard everybody else say about Mark Schaefer. His listening, attention to listening, stewardship, the stewardship leadership role that he described, steward leadership, that's it. He also mentioned a couple of innovative programs that really caught my ear. He was talking about a dashboard from a technical side, the ability to, you know, drill down into statistics and be able to look at data-driven decisions. That was one thing he talked about. Another thing that he mentioned was the virtualization of the classroom. And we actually have some programs here in our district that we're doing something similar, so we can leverage that experience. The third thing that I thought really struck me, the more that I thought about it, especially over the last couple of days, is the description that he made about how he would start early and he would build himself a runway. And that, that really resonated with me.
Okay, Pam.
Sorry. No, that's all good. I liked Mark Schaefer for a lot of the same reasons other folks did. I, I think it's, well, for me personally, it's important that he has his doctorate. That shows a lot of commitment and dedication to education and so to me, that, that did set him, I think we had two in the finalists, so there were Doctors, Doctors, Dr. Huff and Dr. Schaefer. I felt he was a strong and capable leader. That was very evident, his management skills with the principals. You know, his, his recommendation letters were very strong. I feel like his educational philosophy aligns with Thompson School District. And that was important to me, because obviously, we want to work collaboratively. So to me, that stood out as a really important thing with Dr. Schaefer. And he definitely has the experience, the brain and the heart for education and for students. And, you know, he created this, this whole new student advisory committee, which, once again, I'm like, oh, I want to do that. So he had some innovative programs that he had created and implemented, which, once again, very concrete, specific things that he's done. I felt like he was a servant leader, very honest, full of integrity. And, let's see, what else was there? Skilled communicator. Oh, and he talked about win-win a lot, which, of course, for our Leader in Me programs, we love win-win. And just talking about, that he takes the time and, and to empower others. And that really stood out to me, with the way he talked about taking the time and empowering others. So I, I thought he really stood out on a lot of those levels. So, thanks.
Barb?
I also called Dr. Stevenson down in Boulder. I worked with her when I was in Jeffco. So I felt like I could call her and ask her some very funny questions about it, about Dr. Schaefer. And I asked about relationships, and she said by far very much ready and, and has this welcoming attitude towards everybody, knows all the students, can call them by name when he goes into a school, which is amazing when you consider the number of students he comes in contact with. But I also asked him about follow-through, so he's got a lot of really good ideas. And she said, he follows through. If I give him a task, I know that the task is going to get done. But not only that, he always comes back to give me an update on where the task is at that point in time. So I felt like he really had a lot that would really pull completion to tasks.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Next candidate was Mr. Anthony Gerardo, who came to us from Mesa Fifty-One, I believe is the number, school district out in Grand Junction, where he is also an Assistant Superintendent. He was formerly also a longtime employee down in Jeffco, where he was a community superintendent, what they call them down there, but superintendent over a, sort of a zone of schools. Comments on Tony?
So in that same conversation with Dr. Stevenson, I just kind of asked for a comparison, and she said they are both wonderful leaders. They both are very dedicated to education and to students. But she felt strongly that of our, of the two, that she would highly recommend that Dr. Schaefer was perhaps more ready.
He's a candidate for, oh, go ahead.
For, on, for Tony more than any other candidate, I really had to go back and, and look at that question that I asked myself on Friday that, that Barb, you really helped me clarify, right? Which of these candidates is best for this district at this time? And Tony's a very, very strong candidate. But when I was weighing them, it looked like Mark was a better fit for our district at this time.
I was just going to say, for me, he was a candidate that had a tremendous amount of experience, a tremendous amount of knowledge, I guess, about, you know, what, what goes on in a school district. He, he brought by far the most complete plan of, of what, and, and that's sort of a plus and a minus, too. He had a very complete plan of, of what he would do in the first, I think, a hundred and eighty days, which, which could be a negative if, you know, if it doesn't align. But the, the, he, he was, he presented himself as an extremely hard worker and an extremely trustworthy individual. But I think I have to agree, well, I think I have to agree with Mark that, that perhaps just not the best fit at this time for this, for our school district. Although he was very strong in my mind, too, from the beginning.
He definitely did the deepest dive into education for us. I mean, like, it was just constant. He knew, he, he knows his business. His, he knows the business of education, I should say. So very passionate and seemed like, you know, just a great man of honesty and integrity, too, so.
Anybody else? All right. That takes us to our final candidate, our fourth candidate, Mr. Daniel Snowberger. Mr. Snowberger is currently the Superintendent of Durango, Durango Nine R, I believe is the number of the school district. It's a school district of approximately fifty-five hundred to six thousand students down in Durango. And so I will open up conversation on this candidate. Dave?
First of all, I called references for all four candidates, and of course, they all gave good recommendations. Well, the, the first one did not answer the phone. Couldn't get through to that person for Dr. Huff. My evaluation out of the interviews was that this was, this was our strongest candidate. He showed the best leadership skills. I think he had, I think he showed the experience of being a superintendent. And I think what differentiated him for me above everybody else was, he could sense that a superintendent is not just a manager, but a, a leader. He has to have a vision, has to bring the board, has to, has to coordinate that with the board, go out to the community, et cetera. Since then, we've heard some concerns about him, and I take those concerns very seriously. He did receive two votes of the five for him. So I have to admit, it is a concern that everybody else has a concern. I mean, it's, you don't want to just say, I'm the best evaluator and everybody else is wrong. So, but I, I do want to mention, I, he offered a lot of good things, and I'm still very seriously considering him.
Mark? And then Paul, looks like.
So just for clarification, what Dave Levy was referring to was the five different community groups that met. And two of them brought forth the candidate Mark Schaefer as their number one recommendation. Two of them brought forth Daniel Snowberger as their recommendation. And so that was something that I was considering it as well. Again, I go back to what, what I had said at last Friday's meeting, that we have four very, very strong candidates, and this was a very difficult decision.
And Paul?
Yes, I, I was very impressed with, with Dan. I thought he was very strong, you know, in terms of, you know, and he talked about a lot in his interview, parallel districts, a lot of similarities between where he's at right now in our district. So I'd have confidence he could jump right in and hit the ground running. It was not a requirement that we had, a, someone with superintendent experience, but when you sit and listen to people in an interview, you can start to tell the difference between someone who sat in that seat and the buck stops here, and the experiences and the thought processes you have to go through versus someone. You know, and that's where, kind of where Tony came in and, and Mark a little bit is, it's still a little bit hypothetical. I think if I was a superintendent, I would do this, this, and this, and how it turned out, but they don't really know. So having that experience, I think, made him a very strong candidate. But there have been some concerns that have been raised, too, that we've been looking into. So I've kind of backed off him a little bit, so really, you know, Mark's back in the run for me, too, but, you know, I'm still strongly considering Dan, but just, it's just got to be a right fit. So I really appreciated the, the input from the committees and some email. I mean, all that helps us make a better decision. That has me taking a little bit of pause at him, but still, he, he's an excellent candidate. And as of right now, I'd have absolute confidence he could step in and do a good job.
And Pam?
You know, I felt like Dan was not really aligned with our district, with our priorities. And to me, that's one of the number-one things. You know, I think we've, we've all done our research on Mr. Snowberger and realize that he has some different, different goals. And, you know, seemed like a great guy, but just not the right fit at all for Thompson. And, you know, I keep pondering the question, you know, why, you know, since we've built such a strong relationship of trust and collaboration with the, the staff and the teachers in the district and the community members. And when they raise these concerns and ask us to look into them, I think we can't dismiss the teachers and the community members. And I, I can't come up with the one good reason that Dan should rise above Mark. I just, that it's not happening. So I just keep going back to, why would we risk, you know, our relationship with, and the trust we built with the teachers, with the community? And why would we choose someone who we're not aligned with philosophically? So to me, that, that's the biggest, that's the bottom line.
Paul?
So, just to help my thinking, Pam, can you, are these things that he said during the interview or things, when you say he's not aligned? Can you give us some examples of where you thought the misalignment was?
Some of the concerns I had, go back, and I know not everybody got to see resumes, and that was tough for, you know, I think the interview groups, the five different groups, didn't have resumes or applications. So they just had, you know, the questions, which is how it should be. But when I looked at his resume, there was, I believe, a six-year period where he was kind of doing double duty. He was the chief academic officer for a cornerstone prep school charter schools. And that was oh-three to oh-nine. And at the same time, he was down in Douglas County- time, he was down in Douglas County and also then in Harrison School District. So I was curious why he wouldn't have mentioned that six-year period of being chief academic officer. So I started researching that. And in '07, '06, '07, he was as the, I guess, the agent for Cornerstone Charter Schools, was trying to get a charter school established in Greeley, which I thought was really just a strange thing, quite frankly, when he's trying to get a charter school started in Greeley while he was at that time working in Doug Co. And I guess it was a transition between Doug Co. and Harrison. But I thought, I don't, I'm not comfortable with someone, first of all, omitting something in discussions, especially for six years. You know, if it was a year-long job, I would have been like, okay, that's fine. So that was a big red flag for me, that he wasn't, I guess, upfront about, like, okay, I worked for a charter school company for six years. Well, you know, to me, that says he knows he might not be aligned with us. So that was a really, I think, one of the biggest concerns I have is that omission during the interview process. I mean, it was on his resume. And, you know, you can do the research into that. So that was just one example. Do you want me to, isn't that enough?
There was, there was another, I'm trying to find where the answer is here. There was a question, he had mentioned something in the interview about the Conference of School Reform Initiatives that he had worked on and that he had put forward. And I have to say, when I heard the word "school reform initiatives," my antenna went up a little bit. And so I asked the question of our consultants to find, ah, here it is, to find out what that was, because I didn't know what that meant specifically or what that was. And so the answer was, he used that term, comprehensive school reform initiative, during his interview, what does it mean, was my question. During the late 1990s, the U.S. Department of Ed launched a study of several successful models for student learning. One of those he implemented was called Success for All. It's an overlapping reference to several research and proven models for successful student learning, which didn't tell me a whole lot. But it, again, it was, it was kind of one of those little, little moments of, I'm not sure this is a fit with our district.
And I think that one, just another quick example, was when he was at Harrison School District, was, he said that Superintendent Mike Miles brought him in as part of the transition team. And I was like, what kind of transition are we talking about? And they ended up instituting a pay-for-performance plan, which he, I think the quote was, "The most rigorous pay-for-performance plan in the nation." And so, you know, we've talked a lot about pay-for-performance since 2013 in our district. And I think the bottom line is, the community spoke very loudly in 2015. Two-thirds of the voters in Thompson School District spoke up and said, "The reform, you know, philosophy is just not for our district." So I think we have to honor that, because they spoke so clearly and so loudly. We don't see elections in our community go 68% one way. This, it just doesn't happen. So to me, it would be very dismissive and almost arrogant of us to say, oh, well, we're not going to listen to the community and what they said in 2015, because they spoke volumes.
So can I ask Bill a question? At this point, because all these things are concerns, but also at the same time, in my mind, anyway, there's a lot of speculation as well. We've read snippets out of the newspaper, shared different things. If I was in his shoes interviewing, and there's something in my past that I don't necessarily believe in anymore or feel strongly about, I'm not going to talk about an interview as well. So there are reasons why he may not, I guess my question is, is there any room at this point in time for us to speak with him, explore these, get any clarification on any of these, or are we pretty much, what we have is what we have? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Let, can I, do you want me to take that, Dr. Sebers? And take you off the spot for a second? I will. I will. I will jump in here and say.
Thank you.
I think we could, I, can you say that? I think we could go back to anybody we want and ask anything we want, because we're doing the hiring. So yes, we can do that. Go back to the consultant firm and say, hey, get us this more information. Dr. Sebers doesn't necessarily have to do that. We can do that, or have him do it for us.
And we can't do it as individuals.
Correct.
That's, I mean, that's.
It has to, you know, all the information has to come through.
Correct. I can take any feedback from tonight. If you're directing me in one direction, I can talk to McPherson and Jacobson, because I said I would give them an update of where the board's at as far as your conversation and who's surfacing as, you know, a person of interest to the board, you know, as far as what you're asking around that.
So to further help out with that, is, is this, is this candidate a viable candidate at this point to go through that extra work?
So if there's additional resources you're asking for on top of the resources that you've already asked before last Friday, then that question would be specific as far as what you're asking and what you're wanting McPherson and Jacobson to ask of the candidate. And then from there, I could pass that information on the board as soon as I would get that information from McPherson and Jacobson.
Similar to the questions that came up on Friday.
Correct. Correct. It's the same questions that you had on Friday, as far as I would handle it the same and get you the information that you're asking for.
So he may not be a viable candidate, because I might be the minority, but I did feel very strong. He does bring a lot of skills, on my own, kind of due diligence, trying to make a good decision, not on speculation. I mean, if there is a way to try to get some clarification from him, for me personally, I think it'd be worth it and something I'd want, but.
Jeff, did you want to have something to say?
I guess I'm wondering about viable candidate at this point. Before we do it, I would like to see that we have, you know, four people that are interested in pursuing it. Otherwise, it's probably not something worth pursuing. I thought he was a terrific person. He would make a great superintendent. But at this point, I'm not ready to go there and jeopardize the relations that we've worked so hard to create in this district the last couple of years. And he might come in here and have great relations, but my concern is, he's got this cloud over him, whether it's his fault or not. And I don't want to jeopardize the relations in this district. I just don't want to go there.
And, and to, and I'll get you next. And to be honest, from the very beginning, he did not rise above the other three candidates for me. Before I knew any of this, I felt the other three candidates of the four finalists were all stronger in my, in my mind. Dave?
Yes. I think Jeff mentioned the key thing, and Pam was mentioning the key thing. I think he's the strongest candidate by far. But I'm not going to put the relationship we have with the community, the relationship we have with our teachers, the relationship we have with staff, at any risk. There's no guarantee this gentleman that I think is going to be the best is going to be the best. And it's, I appreciate all that's been said. I want to explain just a second, if I could, why I thought he's the right candidate, because I just want to understand my thinking. We have three major problems, three major issues, not problems, issues that need to be addressed. We have teachers that are getting paid, staff across the board, 10% less. And we have to figure out how to solve that. And teachers are leaving. One of the candidates jaw-dropped when they found out how many teachers we replace every year. I said, "I can't believe that." So we have to recognize it's a serious, serious issue. Two, we have to cut the budget. It's not going to get better, it's going to get worse. Gordon showed us a one-time, perhaps, pastor that delays the issue, and nobody's addressing all the backlog of maintenance in our budget. So we got that issue. And three, we have growth. Thank you very much for your comments. They're very much appreciated. We have a growth issue, and it's a tough one. And if you think about it, a little while ago, the board passed a policy that says if schools not 75% utilized, it needs to be closed after there's that condition for three years. That applies to six or seven of our schools. So we have a very big problem. So what I looked for was not just a day-to-day manager. I looked for somebody who said, "You got three serious, significant issues, all of which compete for dollars, all of which are going to take us going to really address them, are going to take going to the public and convincing 75, convincing a large portion of the voters, 75% of which had no kids in the schools." So I saw in this gentleman leadership. But I have such great respect for every one of our staff, our teachers, that if there's any possibility of putting this gentleman at risk, I think I would not, I agree with Pam and I agree with, especially with what Jeff said, would not. And by the way, you see, he wears a jacket when he comes to Berthold? You notice that? Dress code, he understands the dress code? I'm from Berthold, so I don't have to. I'm exempt. I'm exempt.
You'll wear your sweatpants.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, my overall. So I think, I think, Madam President, it'd be a good idea to say, "Who is your preference?" And if we don't have, if we have, if we don't have four votes for Dan, I think it's, what's this, I agree with him, what's the point? Let's just, let's just get on.
So I don't think. So I'd just say that really quick. There is no voting tonight, so there's no voting, I know, but I just want to stop any confusion on the looks that I'm getting after the comment was just said. So I'm just having, there are no votes tonight.
That's okay. But we are allowed to say who our preference is. That's what we.
Well, that sounds pretty close to a vote to me.
At this time, right now, just seeing how the conversation is going right now, I think it's pretty evident of who's surfacing as somebody that has more strengths than others. So at this time, I would not recommend putting any type of straw vote forward.
That's fine.
And just keep it like that.
Thank you, Tom.
Any further comment on the candidates? Paul, you look like you want to say something.
I guess I'm just hearing that I withdraw my request for any follow-up questions.
If you could, I would appreciate you saying it again, so I can just strike that from my notes that I just have and that text I was about to send McPherson and Jacobson.
Nope, strike away. I withdraw my request.
Jeff?
I certainly hope anybody listening doesn't think that we don't have the highest respect for all four of these candidates.
So true. They wouldn't have gotten this far if we didn't.
Every single one of them is going to be a superintendent.
We were so fortunate to have them want to be here. It's a, it's a compliment to all the teachers and the staff and Doctor Scher and the district, everybody, that people would want to come here and be a superintendent. And I have no doubt, any one of them would be successful. But we have to look at who's in the best position to get us there the quickest and do it the right way. We want to be a top district, and we want to get there doing it the right way. We want everybody to feel good about it, especially our staff and teachers.
Well said. Anybody else? All right. I don't believe we have any further, let me find my agenda now. I buried it in all these papers. I don't think we have anything further. Oh, here it is. On the agenda tonight, there are no written reports, I don't believe. We will be meeting, just kind of an FYI, we will be meeting tomorrow, reminder board, from 5:00 to approximately 7:00 in a joint work session with the Master Plan Committee down in the School District Building. And then at 7:00, we will adjourn in a special meeting, at which time I'm expecting that we will have a nomination for a candidate finalist, basically a nomination for the next superintendent position. That's, the soonest we can do it is tomorrow. So judging from the conversation we had tonight, I'm anticipating that that will happen tomorrow night. That meeting will be televised and streamed, so if you can't make it out there and you're curious, you can follow along on TV or on the website. And so 5:00 and 7:00. And there's no written reports. And are there any future agenda items or requests for information at this point? All right. Thank you all for coming out tonight, and the meeting's adjourned.